...of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, July 20, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street. Please come to order. We will please rise for the invocation by Mayor Pro Tim Steve Davis and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for today and for the many blessings that you've given us and given our city. Thank you for this time to be here and to discuss the issues and do business for this town. Dear God, we thank you for each person here for whatever issue may be. Dear God, help us all to work together, the city administration, our citizens, the employees, and those interested in what's happening in our town. Help us to work together in not a selfish way, but in a selfish way to move our town forward and to continue doing things that are pleasing to you and to our people. Dear God, we ask that you be with now our new city manager in his leadership role. We ask that you give him courage and wisdom and strength and that we work together to help him in his new job. And we praise you and we thank you and be with us through the rest of this meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Harson?
Here.
Councilwoman DeGerris?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilwoman Cornman?
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
We do have a call.
Thank you, Clerk Young. Item five, swearing in office of the city manager. Clerk Young, please.
Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Matthew Winters.
I, Matthew Winters.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the state of Missouri.
And that of the state of Missouri.
And of the ordinances of the City of Poplar Bluff.
And of the ordinances of the City of Poplar Bluff.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city manager.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of city manager.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Of said city to the best of my ability. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Winters, for being an intricate part of our team.
Well, I'd like to thank the City Council for the confidence in appointing me to the position. I'm excited about our future.
Thank you. Item six, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I will have to recuse myself from item F.
Okay, so noted. Thank you. Item seven, citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none. Item eight, consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may do so. Being none, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So, maybe.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item nine, workshop items for discussion. A representative from Kraft, Miles, and Tatum's EPA will appear before the City Council to present the audit for the City of Poplar Bluff and municipal utilities for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2019. Mr. Steve Austin.
Good evening. I want to thank the council for the opportunity to be here this evening to discuss the December 31, 2019 audit, which I may have a copy in front of you. Before I get started, I just want to say a quick thank you to the staff at City Hall as well as Mississippi Utilities and their assistance and their time during our audit procedures. It's never an exciting time when we're running around asking questions, trying to get information. Staff is very appeasing. They gave us all the information that we requested in a reasonable timeframe, and they were very gracious with their time. At that point, you've got a lot on the agenda this evening, so I'll try to be as brief as I can. But if you haven't, the financial statements in front of you. We'll go ahead and get started. The first three pages are the table of contents. And if you'll notice, the financial statements are 98 pages long. We won't cover every page this evening. We'll spend the majority of our time covering the financial statements themselves. It's really foul. We'll look at the government-wide financial statements, talk briefly on the fund financial statements, and then we'll conclude with a review of the city's federal expenditures. So if you turn to the first page past the table of contents, it is our independent auditor's report. This report outlines management's responsibility for the financial statements. It is management's responsibility to prepare and present these in a fair way. Our responsibility as the city's auditors to express an opinion on these financial statements. And if you turn to the second page of this report, it is the opinion paragraph with the first paragraph on the second page. We have issued an unmodified opinion, which means that the financial statements are presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So at this point, we'll turn our attention to the financial statements, so we'll turn to page 11. And as you're turning, just as a reminder for some and kind of a quick overview of the financial statements, the city's financial statements are broken down between government-wide and fund financial statements. Government-wide reports information between governmental and business-type activities, while the fund financial statements reports governmental, proprietary, as well as fiduciary, between major and non-major funds. So as we cover, that will go. But on page 11, you'll find the statements of net position. At the top, you'll see the governmental and business-type activities. Three-quarters of the way down the page, you'll see the total assets for the city, $159.2 million overall. And when I'm reading page numbers, those are the page numbers that's found at the bottom of your actual page.
Right.
You may have them printed on both sides for this evening, but it'll be the page number.
I think it's correct, but I don't think it's following what we have. Because 11 looks like this.
Are you talking about that picture? I think it's how it was printed, maybe a little different. But at the top of the page, it'll say statement of net position, governmental and business-type activities. Three-quarters of the way down the page, you'll see total assets of $159.2 million. Overall, the city did see an increase in their total assets of $4.7 million. And if there's questions on what we're discussing and you can't find it, then just ask a question, raise your hand, and we'll try to make sure that everybody follows through as we go through this presentation. Total assets increased of $4.7 million. The governmental assets, $54.4 million, saw a $3.1 million decrease, while the business-type activities saw a $7.8 million increase in their total assets. Most of that increase is coming from the capital assets for municipal utilities. Continuing to page 12, once again, statement of net position. Liability should be at the top of this page. Once again, government-wide financial statements, governmental and business-type activities. Halfway down the page, you'll see the total liabilities for the city, far right-hand column of $99.4 million. Overall, the liabilities for the city increased, $4.7 million as well, most of that coming from the long-term obligations of your business-type activities. In 2019, the water sewer department issued a Series 2019 state revolving direct loan funds for the year, and so that makes up about $6.1 million new debt for the city for business-type activities here on page 12. And we'll continue to page 13. Once again, government-wide statement, statement of activities. Governmental activities on the top of this page, business-type activities underneath. The far-left-hand column of this page, you'll see total expenses for the governmental activities, $22.6 million for the year. And then down below that, business-type activities, you'll see $43.7 million in total expenses for the business-type activities for the City of Poplar Bluff. And the next page is just a continuation of a statement of activities. This page here will show the general revenues, which are property taxes, sales tax, tourism, gasoline tax. Overall, total general revenues and transfers, $19.3 million for the governmental activities, $777,000 for business-type activities. Overall, total general revenues and transfers were down approximately $824,000 for the year. And then the third line from the bottom, you'll see total change in net position for the city. Far-right-hand column is $1.7 million increase. The governmental activities saw a decrease of a little over $700,000 for the year, and the business-type activities saw an increase in their net position of $2.4 million. Continuing on to page 15, and at the top of 15, it should say balance sheet governmental funds. Pages 15 through 26 are the fund financial statements of the city. This is probably what most of you are used to seeing on a day-to-day basis. Governmental funds, proprietary and fiduciary. Once again, they're reporting major funds and non-major funds. Here on page 15 is the balance sheet. The first column on this page, you'll notice that the city's general fund, halfway down the page, you'll see that the general fund ended the year at $6.8 million. The largest balance of assets for the general fund would be taxes receivable of $2.4 million, which is pretty consistent from year to year if you go back and compare prior years. Counter receivable other funds, $1.8 million, and then restricted cash and cash equivalents of a little under $2 million for 2019. Liabilities for the general fund, $1.2 million, pretty consistent, once again, from prior years. And then the second line from the bottom, you'll see the total fund balance for the general fund at year-end, a little under $5.6 million. And then we'll turn over just a couple pages to page 17. And the heading on page 17 will be your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds. Reporting revenues and expenditures. Once again, your major funds across the top, general fund, Hybe 67 Tax Fund, the special allocation fund, and then the fourth column would be your non-major funds for your governmental. Total revenues for the governmental funds for the city, far-right-hand column, $21.5 million for the year. $12.1 of that is for the general fund for 2019. Three-quarters of the way down the page is total expenditures. Governmental activities had $22.7 million in total expenditures for the year, $13.2 million of that coming from the general fund activities. And then the third line from the bottom, you'll see net change in fund balance. The general fund had a negative change of a little over $2 million for the year. Special allocations saw an increase in their fund balance of $543,000. The non-major funds in total, negative change of $1.1 million. And then the far column to the right, total governmental funds saw a decrease in fund balance of $2.6 million. No questions? We'll turn over a couple pages to page 19. Pages 19 through 22, you'll see are the proprietary fund financial statements. This information is the same information, only a different reporting aspect than what we've already discussed on pages 11 through 14. Two major enterprise funds for the city, municipal utilities and the Black River Coliseum, the non-major enterprise fund, which are the golf course and the airport. Overall, total assets for proprietary funds, a little over $104 million for the year. And just real quick on this one, since it's the same information that we've already discussed, we'll turn over to pages 21 and 22. And this will show for the proprietary funds, the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund net position. On page 21, you'll see total operating revenues for the enterprise funds of $45.4 million for 2019. At the bottom of the page, the total operating expenses for the proprietary funds, $43.2 million. And then the bottom line on this page, you'll see your operating income and/or loss, total enterprise funds of $2.1 million for 2019. And then turn one page, the statement continues on page 22. And the third line from the bottom, we've already discussed, change in net position for proprietary funds previously. But here on page 22, you'll see the change in net position for the utilities fund was a positive $2.7 million. The coliseum fund had a negative change in net position of $283,000. The non-major enterprise funds, a negative change of $31,000. And overall, $2.4 million increase in net position for the enterprise funds. Continuing to page 23, just real briefly, here on page 23 are the proprietary funds, statement of cash flows. This page will provide cash detail on cash activity for the city's proprietary funds for 2019. Once again, the two major funds and then the non-major funds, broken out individually. And then the third line from the bottom, you'll see the total change in cash for those individual funds for the city. If there's no questions, we'll turn over a few pages to page 27. And just real briefly, pages 27 through 65 are going to be the notes to the financial statements. These pages will provide you additional detail of the information that we've already discussed. We've mentioned long-term debt as well as capital assets. The detail of that information is going to be found in the notes to the financial statements. But at this point, I want to turn our attention to the back of the financial statements to discuss the federal expenditures. So page 94 is what we'll turn to. And as you're turning to page 94, part of the procedures for our audit, not only do we audit the financial statements for the city, we also perform a single audit procedures, which is centered around the city and their federal expenditures. But on pages 94 and 95, you'll see the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And these two pages outline the federal expenditures by U.S. departments as well as individual grants. I'll make sure everybody finds that before I continue on page 94. 95 is the total for the federal expenditures, and as you'll see at the bottom of page 95, the city had $7.7 million of federal expenditures for the year. The threshold for a single audit for any not-for-profit and governmental entity is $750,000. So the city reached that threshold. So part of our procedures was to perform a single audit procedures. And what that means, just kind of in layman's terms, is we come through and then we review compliance as well as internal controls over compliance for the city's major programs. Of that $7.7 million that you see on page 95, $6.5 million of that was related to the water sewer department and municipal utilities and their clean water state revolving grant fund. So that's the program that we tested when we were at municipal utilities. We looked at the compliance for those compliance requirements as well as internal control over those compliance. So the last thing we'll discuss in summary is on page 97, which would be the second to the last page of your financial statements. Here on page 97 is the schedule of findings and questioned costs. And part one is a summary of auditor's results, just a list of items that we'll go through briefly that kind of summarize the audit procedures that we performed. The first item, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements for the City of Poplar Bluff for 2019. There were no material weaknesses in internal control over financial reporting for the city that needed to be disclosed. Our audit did not disclose any non-compliance, which is material to the financial statements for the city. No material weakness is in internal control over major program, and major program would be the federal expenditures for the city. We issued an unmodified opinion on compliance for the major programs. Our audit did not disclose any audit findings, which are required to be reported in accordance with federal regulations. The major programs, I mentioned just a few seconds ago, was the capitalization grants for Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which had about $6.5 million of total expenses for the year. $750,000 was the threshold to distinguish between type A and type B programs. And then the last item here, the City of Poplar Bluff was not determined to be a low-risk auditee. And if you'll remember, back in 2017, there was a modified opinion on the financial statements, and that excludes the city from being considered a low risk. Assuming all things are constant, the city can expect to be considered low risk, a low-risk auditee for the 2020 audit year. Lot of numbers, lot of information in front of you. If there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. We appreciate it.
If there's any questions after this evening, Nevada and Matt have my email address. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you once again. I guess we need a motion and a second to step this.
Make the motion. We approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, the City Council will consider a proposed ordinance establishing procedures for the disclosure of potential conflictive interests and substantial interest in certain municipal offices. Mr. Winters.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance that we adopt on an annual basis. Because our city has over, our city budget's over $1 million, its reporting requirement we have to provide to the Missouri Ethics Commission under state statutes. There's a form that we provide to them for any potential conflict of interest among any officials, elected officials. Like I said, this is kind of a, this is done every year on an annual basis, has to be done and submitted to the Missouri Ethics Commission by September 15.
Any other discussion on that item? If not, sure, we entertain a motion to move this to the August 3 voting session.
So, maybe.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item C, the City Council will consider a proposed gas line easement agreement with Spire Gas Company to allow access across flood-byout properties with services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been dealing with the Spire Gas Company. They've reached out to me, and they're needing an easement for a gas line that would be submitted across some flood-byout properties that the city owns on South 11th Street. They're burying a new line to Empire Comfort Systems. Because they're flood-byout properties, we had to have SEMA and FEMA approval even before this request could be brought to the City Council. We have worked with FEMA and SEMA and Spire and received approval from FEMA for a gas line to be buried there. And so now Spire is asking for an easement to bury that gas line across our flood-byout properties. And I do, I have, dealing with FEMA is not an easy and quick task, so it has been several weeks in the making, and Spire has already started to do some work, if you've been down that direction, at Empire Comfort Systems, coming back towards 53. And so I would ask if the council feels inclined for you to workshop and vote on this this evening, so we won't slow down their progress. Make the motion, move this to the voting session tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item D, the City Council will review a request for approval of a cell tower height of 125 feet located at 1017 Ridge Avenue, Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, back a few weeks ago, the City Council approved a temporary monopole cell tower of 85 feet at this same location. The company's now requesting this approval for 125 feet for their permanent location as they're working on their FCC approvals. I believe that there's a representative, Mr. Sprague, here tonight. If you have any questions for him, he'd be glad to come and address you, I'm sure.
Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Jake Sprague with Network Real Estate.
There's a button on there.
Yeah. There we go. Everybody hear me now? My name is Jake Sprague with Network Real Estate. We are a registered agent of AT&amp;T, and my address is 5055 Highway N, Suite 200, St. Charles, Missouri, 63304. And as Matt said, you know, thank you for your consideration. This is the permanent site that we are currently working on to ultimately transition the temporary site that we got approval for about a month and a half ago, right there at Bluff Canal and Westwood. So obviously, as you guys all know, it's a very, very busy intersection, and coverage right there is not nearly as great as AT&amp;T would like it to be. So this is hopefully there to resolve that.
Have any questions of our guests?
Make the motion, move this to the August 3 voting session.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, sir. Item E, the City Council will consider an amendment to Section 110.100, procedures at meetings. Mr. Winters.
Yes, sir. I think you had discussed this with Clerk Young and also some other City Council folks that made a request that we look at the, reducing the number of minutes that a citizen can speak in the public input section from 10 minutes down to five minutes. Clerk Young, she's reached out to several other cities around the state, and the majority of cities that she's reached out to allow for a five-minute public input per person or per group session, in some cases, even less than five minutes. At our last meeting, I think we had citizen input of about 45 minutes, and some meetings have had citizen input that lasted up to an hour and a half. I don't believe this anyway takes away from our citizens for their ability to address the council and to make their arguments about things, topics they want to discuss with you. So this is on your agenda for your discussion. So this is on your agenda for your discussion and consideration.
I'll make a motion. We move this to tonight's voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item F, the city manager will dis, the city manager will present options for budget issues.
This is exactly what you want to do on your first city council meeting as the new city manager. You know, this has been a topic of discussion for a few weeks, for a few different meetings. Mr. Massingham presented some options to you at the last meeting and I've gone back and, and met with several of the different department managers and we've looked at some different areas and, and I have some different recommendations. I, I enclosed in your packet a worksheet of some things that I looked at as far as budget cuts goes. And one of the things that, that I think the first on my list is, is a hiring freeze. You know, right now we have seven positions that aren't open, that are open. If we do not fill those positions for the rest of the year, you're looking at about $186,000 worth of savings between now and the end of the year in salary and benefits. Another cut that was discussed was the, the closing of the pool in the fitness center. They've had some cuts in their expenses just based on their shutdown during the, during the COVID situation. You know, and one of the things that I met with Bobby Godwin, the director at the Coliseum, and what we looked at was, as opposed to completely closing that facility to reduce the hours, having it open at peak times, which would be in the mornings, first thing for those people that come in before work, around the noon hour, I think 11 to 1 is when they have some more, more traffic come in. And then for a couple hours in the evenings, I think 5 to 7, around in that neighborhood, you're gonna, we're gonna reduce our labor costs. But reducing that schedule down, you're looking at a savings of about $15,000. Another, another opportunity here at the Coliseum, there's a part-time employee that was budgeted for the Coliseum that has not been hired, never, that position never was filled. There was also a considerable amount of temporary staff that was budgeted for the Coliseum for, those were folks that were used for events, for setup and for tear downs. That reduction, you know, a lot of it has been realized already through the, through the cancellation of events and, and through the cancellation of, of events that are coming up that haven't even, that, so that's another $25,000. There's also, the, the last one on the agenda is the, on my list is the museum, Margaret Harwood Museum. You know, I think Mark had suggested that we shut the museum down and kind of another option that I'm giving you to consider is, as opposed to laying off the director and eliminating that position, is to reduce that position down to three days a week. Excuse me. And then also, my, the city did receive a grant from the FAA for COVID relief and that was $69,000. It's gonna go directly to labor costs at the airport, so that won't come out of general fund. So in total, with the, with the recommendations that, that I have presented to you, it's around $330,000, actually a little bit more than the 283 that was originally the bud, budget deficit. You know, I do think that we're best to be conservative right now. We don't really know what the next few months are gonna hold. You know, we've had folks in our community that have gotten the federal stimulus payment and there's also the, the folks that were unemployed that were drawing the $600 a week. You know, that's ending at the end of this week. So I, with my, with what I presented you, I think will get us to where we need to be today and hopefully through the end of the year. I know that there's several of you here that I'm sure were interested in the 1% pay cut and it's, to prevent doing that, you know, I think leaving these positions open, not having to reduce the staff's pay by 1%, you know, we haven't, haven't gotten raises in a while and I really, that definitely was not something I wanted to do on my first city council meeting. So I, I, I think that we've looked at some places and worked with other department managers to be able to come up with some cuts and, and not fill in some position that's gonna get us to where we need to be between, between now and the end of the year. So without having to cut everybody's pay 1%. So. Do you have any questions of me?
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. I mean, you were, you were able to keep the pool and fitness clo, or open, museum open and no 1% cut and you were able to cut even more money than we previously talked about. So, great job on that.
I make a motion to move to tonight's voting session.
Second.
Yeah, I think it's.
August 3.
August 3. Sorry, August 3.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, sir.
Item 10, action required items. AA, bill number 8244, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the city of Poplar Bluff to en, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, there's no, still out there. The city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the city of Poplar Bluff to enter into a loan agreement with the Missouri Transportation Finance Corporation in regard to the Highway 67 I-57 project.
Motion for first reading.
Bill 8244.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a loan agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri Transportation Finance Corporation relative to the Highway 67 I-57 project.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a loan agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff and the Missouri Transportation Finance Corporation relative to the Highway 67 I-57 project.
Motion for adoption of bill 8244.
Second.
Any further discussion? Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Bill number 8244 is adopted. BB, bill number 8245, the city council will take action on a gas line easement agreement with Spire Gas Company.
Motion for reading, bill 8245.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance granting an easement to Spire Missouri Inc. for an underground natural gas line along South 11th Street in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance granting an easement to the Spire Missouri Inc. for an underground natural gas line along South 11th Street in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number 8245 is adopted. Item CC, bill number 8246, the city council will take action on an ordinance selecting an engineering firm for services regarding street paving for the CDBG grant application.
Motion for reading, bill 8246.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance selecting and appointing an engineering firm for the city of Poplar Bluff 2020 street paving grant application from the Community Development Block Grant
Do I have a motion?
Motion for second reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance selecting and appointing an engineering firm for the city of Poplar Bluff 2020 street paving grant application from the Community Development Grant Program.
Motion for adoption, bill 8246.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you. Bill number 8246 is adopted. Item DD, bill number 8247, the city council will take action on an ordinance amending section 110.100 proceeding, procedures at meetings.
Motion for first reading, bill 8247.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, section 110.1004A relating to procedures at city council meetings for the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading, bill 8247.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, section 110.1004A relating to procedures at city council meetings for the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number 8247 is adopted. Thank you, Counselor Richardson. Item EE, the city council of the city of Poplar Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law in section 16.21.1, .2, .3, .9, .11, .12, .13, and .14 of the revised statute of Missouri following the city manager's report.
Motion, we move to closed session after the city manager's report.
Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Carry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I really thought when I took this job that I would get to speak less at city council meetings. That's obviously not been the case tonight, but I'm excited and I look forward to working with all seven of you as, as we move forward. I just had to have a couple things real quick. There, some council members had reached out to Clerk Young and asked her to add a statement to our request to speak form, dealing with address code. The forms that are laid out tonight and will be laid out in the future just have a short statement on it that says speaker must be appropriately dressed, preferably a business casual. Those inappropriately dressed will be denied access to the council and discretion will be that of the mayor and the city council. So that's on the, the new request to speak forms that are laid out over there. They're kind of similar to the requirements that Judge Millian has for court. That's nothing, we don't expect, I don't, I don't think that your intent is to expect people to come up in a suit and tie and, but to be respectful of you and, and the, the platform that they're given. So if you have any questions about that, we can talk more about it. The other thing I wanted to mention is that on Thursday, this coming Thursday, Ms. Horton and Ward III are hosting a workshop on awareness of homelessness and the resources that are available to the homelessness, the homeless. They're being held here in the Coliseum in the front lobby, meeting rooms. The times are, there's a session at 1:00 and then a section, another session at 5:30 that the public is invited to attend. And that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Adjourn. We will take about a five-minute break and we will reconvene.